Okay. Okay, we're live.
All right, great. If we could call roll, please.
Okay, Katya Allen.
President.
Rhea Heiser.
Yeah.
Scott Reiser.
Here.
Angela Rosman.
Here.
Rodney Rutherford.
Here.
Sandeep Single.
Here.
And John Tim Chisen.
Here.
Thanks.
All right, so tonight is our next part of the study session for the part two of the Station Area Plan, and then a public hearing for the Comp Plan Amendments, and then Planning Commission Policies and Procedures, the ones we talked about last meeting. So with that, do we have any comments from the audience? All right, now is time for items for the audience if you would like to address the Planning Commission. Otherwise, we will move on.
I do want to talk.
Okay, now would-
I want to talk about a specific copy after I know what they've talked about.
So specifically for the public hearing, or are you here to talk about the station area?
The station plan.
So you can either speak now, or at the very end of the meeting, we have another time-
I'll test that.
Okay, great. Then let's get started with the staff presentation, please.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to the Planning Commissioners here in person with us in City Hall. It's good to see you all. And welcome to Sandra and Brad joining us from the Methune team virtually. So we're gonna go through a really, really brief review for you on the Station Area Plan tonight. We have the same cast of characters here to answer your questions, myself, Adam Weinstein, Scott Guder, and then Sandra and Brad from Methune. We're gonna give you an update on the status of the Neighborhood Residential District, walk you through the Form-Based Code, a really brief review of what we talked with you about at your last meeting, and then some new concepts for discussion tonight. We're gonna give you an update on transportation based on some of the questions that were raised during the last meeting, and then open it up for Planning Commission discussion that Scott will lead us through. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please, Sandra. Great. So just to remind you quickly, we've accomplished several phases of the Station Area Plan at this point in the process. We've been working on it since 2019, and so in June, we adopted several pieces, including the plan, Comp Plan Goals and Policies, and Design Guidelines, and a first phase of zoning. We're now working on the items that you see in orange that have that white dashed line around them, so a Planned Action Ordinance, and Phase Two of the Form-Based Code and Parcel Rezones. Next slide, please, thanks. So briefly, wanted to share with the Commission, we did hold a community open house and a question and answer session this past Monday. So staff was in council chambers Monday afternoon. We had several folks drop through. We showed them these posters, which we had printed out, and got to have several in-depth conversations with community members. We heard a lot of questions about just trying to understand what the Form-Based Code was, questions about the transportation system, and then heard some specific questions from property owners nearby the Form-Based Code. So I think across staff members, we ended up talking a lot about transitions, and community members share many of the questions you asked us on October 13th. We also held a, did a presentation in a hybrid format Monday evening after the open house, and had a Q and A session, and I would say the questions raised in that Q and A session were pretty similar to those we heard during the open house. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And then, sorry, one more piece on the outreach. Along with Planning Commissioners, City Council, when we gave them a briefing on Phase Two, had some questions about outreach and conversations we might be having with the development community in terms of testing whether the code that we're working on is going to be feasible in that development community. And along those lines, we did attend a meeting of NIOP, which is a, an organization of commercial real estate developers, and so, and includes architects, land use attorneys, and other kind of related professions. So staff did attend an East Side Subcommittee of that group a couple weeks ago, and we provided the Planning Commission with a summary of what we learned there that was emailed out to you earlier today. Okay, next thing, so, and I invite Adam and Scott to fill in any of the details I forgot. And so, wanted to talk to the Commission before we jump into the Form-Based Code on the Neighborhood Residential District that is within those Form-Based Code boundaries. And so if I could, maybe Sandra or Brad could kind of point those out, because you've noted, you'll notice that they've changed in color, and they just show up as hashed now. So those areas in the station area are existing low-density residential zones. The changes that we were looking to make in those districts with the Form-Based Code were fairly minimal in terms of what they would actually result in on the ground. And at this point, after studying them and working on Form-Based Code for them, we've decided that it would be better to look at that low-density residential zone on a broader scale, not just in the Station Area Plan, but if we are going to make changes in the low-density districts, to look at them kind of on a broader spectrum. And so at this time, we are not going to be bringing you draft code for the Neighborhood Residential Zone, so that's the low-density zoning. We will be making changes in our zoning code to apply the street standards that you've seen within those Form-Based, that Form-Based Code boundary, but we're not going to be bringing you Neighborhood Residential Form-Based Code at this time. So I just want to pause there. I don't know if anyone has any questions off the bat on that, or if you want to see the other pieces of the Form-Based Code that we're bringing you tonight, and reserve your questions for later.
Looks like no questions at this point, so.
Okay, well, we'll keep moving and-
It's weird, I have to like turn my head to like look at-
The, the next thing is another follow-up item from the October 13th discussion with the Commission in the Form-Based Code. And so two of the things that we heard from the Commission at that time were that you wanted us to draft language to ensure we were going to get active street-level uses within these districts. And so we have drafted language for that. You see it on your screen in that top paragraph. So we'd like to, we have a question for you later in the meeting on that, but wanted to point it out that we have drafted some language for you to look at that we could slide into the full draft code that you'll eventually review. And then the second piece of that, and again, based on the Commission's discussion on the 13th, was to ensure that in the Urban Flex District west of 405 and in the Nor Kirk LIT Zone, that we're making sure that that area reserves its industrial and commercial character, and that we have specific language in that code that makes sure if residential is allowed, it's only allowed on the upper floors. And so we've drafted up some language that, again, we could slide into the code on that. So we'll talk about that later in the session tonight, but wanted to flash that up for you to let you know we have it and are prepared to discuss the specific language with the Commission. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to the Methune team to go over a bit of a review of the Form-Based Code from last week, and then talk about the new pieces we'll be discussing tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Allison. Good evening. It's good to be back with you all again. We're not going to spend too much time going over the basics of the Form-Based Code. We just spoke about it recently and have talked about it several times, but just one more refresher for those who may be joining us for the first time. So the Form-Based Code is organized into three basic categories. There's the Regulating District section, which focuses on the building design, height, and massing, and facade modulation. The frontage types, which address the ground floor and the public realm relationship between private parcels and public frontages. And then street types, which regulate or provide guidance for the public or private ride-of-way, and how that should be designed in relationship to the buildings and frontages. And then, of course, the design guidelines are not part of the Form-Based Code, but an additional tool that can be used to address more architectural or site-level concepts during design review processes. Next slide. And as we've talked about before, each of those pieces is really important to helping to create the kinds of built environment results that were identified in the Station Area Plan vision. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sandra to talk about something we haven't talked about recently, which is the sustainability standards in the Form-Based Code, which came up last time we spoke with Commission, and also in several of our recent civic engagement events. Sandra?
Thanks, Brad. So as an overarching element, the sustainability framework of the Station Area Plan itself advances the city's objectives related to the Sustainability Master Plan. The station, the station area is a demonstration district that aligns to the overall city goals. And within the Form-Based Code, you can see on the far right, the District-Wide Standards has a green innovation component that's been included to ensure that new development is consistent with the vision of the Northeast 85th Street Station Area Plan and the Sustainability Framework, as well as alliance with the City of Kirkland Sustainability Master Plan, too. The station area is envisioned as a future-ready demonstration district, and really focuses on opportunities related to climate action, resilience, and quality of life. And these goals are integrated into all aspects of the plan, including tree canopy and water quality, and some other multi-benefit strategies such as flexible use and open space. It also includes specific implementation tools, including the Green Factor standards. So the Green Factor standards are, they're established for new developments within the Station Area Plan. They include these six key elements that you see here, including landscape, green roofs, green walls, and innovation. It is a way to prioritize investments in sustainability features that are both visible and functional and focused on the public realm. So it's really tied to open space goals and creating connected green network that already exists within the station area. So how it works is that the Green Factor, basically, this would be a worksheet, and developers and architects could use this to fill out and understand if their project is meeting baseline sustainability goals. There's multiple ways to achieve the baseline, and this tool allows some flexibility without being too prescriptive. And so they'd be filling out whatever lines were applicable to their project here. In terms of how it works in practice, this is an example of a public space that can start to layer in those sustainability goals that I had outlined previously. So on the right side of your screen, you start to see some key Green Factor elements that enhance the public space, such as landscape areas that have deeper and healthier soils and bioretention facilities. So on the left, you start to see how the quality of that open space becomes much more positive due to the Green Factor. So I'll pass it back to Brad to talk about transitions.
Okay, thanks, Sandra. So the next section we're going to cover is in response to some of the great discussion and feedback that we heard last time we met with you about the transitions. So we've done some additional study and pulled some additional materials. Just a reminder, transitions are a tool that's required. Anytime there's a difference between the maximum allowed height of a given zoning district and the adjacent zoning district, anytime that difference is 30 feet or more, there would be a required transition. So to help visualize where those transitions would apply based on the current proposed Form-Based Code, we've mapped that here. So the areas in, the red dashed lines are places that would definitely require a transition based on the current proposals. The areas in purple are places where we currently have a range of potential height proposals. And so we've marked those if the upper end of that range, if it were to be proposed, would trigger a transition, and then we've, but the lower end might not. So we just distinguish those because there may or may not be a transition required based on the ultimate height for those areas that's proposed. But this gives you a sense of the places where we see those transitions being necessary in the district today. And you'll also note, notice that it doesn't, the transition doesn't have to happen within the Form-Based Code area. So parcels that are outside of the Form-Based Code area, their existing zoned height could still, would still trigger a transition if the area within the Form-Based Code is the taller height. Next slide. We also heard questions and feedback about just some of the mechanics of how the transition height plane is calculated. So we wanted to do a little bit more of a deep dive on how that works. So there's two measurements that are important for, for creating the transition rule. The first one is where the height plane or the angle is taken from. That height is the one in red. So when you're drawing the transition plane, as we've talked about before, there's sort of a three-step process. There's a buffer, a landscape buffer that would get created, a 15-foot landscaped buffer. Then the transition would go up to the adjacent zoned height, so the height of the adjacent property's zoning. And then there's a transition plane that gets drawn. So the red line is identifying where that vertex is here, what that height is judged based on. And that's based on the elevation of the midpoint of the common property line. So that's, so for example, if this height was at 325 feet above sea level, that would be the elevation point. That would be the point at which you would go up to the adjacent property's height. The other measurement that's really important for calculating the allowance or the entitlement with the transition rule is how the building height is measured. And that's based on the typical approach that Kirkland uses today, which is the average building elevation, which is based on the exterior wall locations and their midpoint elevations, and it's averaged, and it's a, it's the typical formula that's used today in the city, and it's based on the per building. So if there were multiple buildings inside of this, on, inside of this property, each of them would have its own ABE that would be judged to get to that allowed height. So that's how the heights are calculated. This helps balance the need to be responsive to the grade changes that might happen across the property that's being regulated, and also the topographic relationship between the adjacent property and the subject property in question. Next slide. So we showed this graphic last time. One of the things that we've been doing since we last met was doing some further study on some of the key sites that were raised as areas of interest, and studying what a few different angles would result in in terms of code-compliant buildings that could be developed under those different transition rules. So I'm gonna click through a couple examples of each of these two sites and show how two different angles of those sky exposure planes would impact the kind of building result that you could see. Next slide. So the last time we talked, we were looking at a 25-degree transition angle. So again, that's the angle, if you look at the Axon diagram on the bottom left, that's the angle at which you have to go up from the adjacent property's zoned height, and it creates a plane within which the building has to stay within. So what we're doing is we're testing two different angles. We'll show you 25 degrees, and then we'll show you 30 degrees, which would be just a steeper angle. Also, this is taken, if you look at the bottom inset map, you can see that this is taken looking south on 120th, just south of Northeast 84th Lane, which would be here. And so this is an example of the 25-degree angle. In this case, the building would be able to achieve the full 150-foot height, which is what's shown here. And then if you go to the next slide, this would be if it was at a 30-degree angle. 30 degrees was the angle at which we, was the greatest angle at which we wouldn't start to impact the height that could be achieved. So it's the steepest angle at which we could still achieve the 150-foot height. And so if we went steeper, it would obviously have an impact on the building's ultimate allowances. So it would start to carve away at least one, potentially two floors. But this gives you a sense of those two differences. And Sandra, maybe you can just go back and forth between those again if it's possible. Oh, sorry. Great, thanks. We can come back to these and talk about them more. So if you go to the next slide. So the next site that we looked at was at the corner of 128th and 85th. And so this is an area that's currently zoned, proposed to be zoned at 85 feet. And in this case, we're looking at a residential building within that 85-foot zone. So what you're seeing here is looking, looking south from 128th towards 85th. That's the intersection you see in the drawing. And then this is showing at 25-degree angle what would be required. It's also worth noting that the trees, which form a significant part of the buffer screen, the existing trees, those would be retained based on our review of the site today. So those would remain in this case. So if you go to the next one, you'll see it at 30 degrees, which you can see starts to pull the building massing towards 85th. So Sandra, again, if you could just kind of toggle back and forth so folks can see that. And then if you go to the next slide, we'll have the same thing, but just from a different angle, so you can see it from within that residential neighborhood. So in this case, we've drawn in the profile line of the roof, just because the trees block most of the building mass, just so you can kind of track where that is. And then you can toggle this one as well, Sandra. You'll notice most of the view change is really only happening in this portion. The rest of the building is set up close to 85th, and so it wouldn't be impacted by that sky plane. Great, thanks. So the last section that we wanted to talk about in the Form-Based Code review for tonight is the district that we haven't covered so far, which is the Civic Mixed-Use District. So this zone's intended to encourage uses that are consistent with a mixed-use environment, but one that's anchored by civic and institutional uses. The only area that we've currently proposed for this zoning designation is the Lake Washington High School property. And you can see there's two different height sub-districts within this. A 45-foot zone, which would include the existing school facility and the, the east side of the property, and then a 75-foot sub-district, which is positioned adjacent to the Neighborhood Mixed-Use portion of 80th and 120th. If you go to the next slide. So again, when we talk about these regulating districts, there are a couple key parameters or key measurements that we're using to regulate these districts. For the lots, those include things like the setbacks and the maximum lot coverage. And then for the building design, it includes massing and development standards, such as maximum facade widths and facade breaks to help break down and modulate the street walls, upper-story setbacks to pull the upper stories of the buildings away from the street to create a more human-scaled environment, and then tools for regulating the upper stories, like maximum floor plates, tower separation, and other, and maximum heights for base and bonus, all of which work together to help break down the bulk and the perceived intensity of those taller buildings. Next slide. So in the Civic Mixed-Use, as I mentioned, the, some of the main goals in this district, one is to set a limited maximum height so that it fits the surrounding neighborhood context. So as I mentioned, the majority of the site would remain at 45 feet. A portion adjacent to Neighborhood Mixed-Use development would be zoned at 75 feet. We would also allow large floor areas, which supports educational and civic uses. And then we would also require upper-story setbacks on that 75-foot area to create a human-scaled neighborhood development context. Next slide. And with that, I'll pass it back to Allison to talk about the incentive zoning structure.
Thanks, Brad. So we're not going to dive too deep into this tonight, but just wanted to give you a little preview into what we're working on. And that is to add some additional incentive amenities for the Phase Two districts within the incentive zoning program. And so in Phase One, the Commercial Mixed-Use District did not allow residential uses, and so there was no performance-based incentive option, meaning that people couldn't provide affordable housing units in order to receive some type of development bonus. And so the only affordable housing incentive option in that Commercial Mixed-Use District is a commercial development contribution or a payment, as well as the other options for mobility, parks and open space, sustainability, school space, and then a flexible amenity option where someone could propose something that falls outside of one of those categories. And so in Phase Two, our work on the incentive zoning program is really to look at performance measures, so meaning ways that people could provide additional or different types of affordable units onsite and receive some type of development bonus for them. And so the three things that we're looking at, and we talked to you about these in your second September meeting, was looking at options for providing more units, so more than the required 10% that we already have in the district, providing affordable units that have three or more bedrooms, so more family-sized units, or, or, sorry, providing affordable units at a deeper level of affordability than our current standards require. So we're working on that and developing what the exchange rates for providing those types of units might be, and we'll be bringing those to you at a future date. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. And then the second item I'm going to cover right now is just a bit of a review on transportation. And so the Commission had asked some questions about the transportation network. And so we wanted to just remind the Commission of the work that we've done on transportation, and this is work that we discussed in depth with the Transportation Commission as they advised City Council on this, but just wanted to go over it with Planning Commission. And so we have done several rounds of transportation analysis in the formation of the Station Area Plan. That included some baseline work, so looking at existing conditions and developing the alternatives that we studied in the environmental impact analysis. So that was in 2020. In 2021, we took the draft supplemental environmental impact statement options and formed two new alternatives that fell within the bookends of those. We called those the June Alternatives. So we did additional transportation work to support those. We did additional transportation analysis on walksheds and bike sheds, so looking more at active transportation and how those types of transportation would interact with vehicle traffic. We looked more closely at the 405 interchange and how, when redeveloped, it would interact with the streets within the station area. And then we also developed project concepts, so looked at the transportation network, what improvements would need to be made to it, and then worked those into a fiscal analysis that we completed in 2021. In 2022, we took the list of projects that we had developed for the fiscal analysis and refined those further based on a lot of feedback from the Transportation Commission, so trying to dial those in to make sure that the ways we were proposing to improve the transportation network for vehicles, bikes, pedestrians, and other forms of active transportation, making sure that those projects would actually accomplish the vision and goals that we were forming for the station area. We created a mode split goal, so, meaning a travel-type desired split between single occupancy vehicles, car share, active transportation modes. We looked at how long it would take transit to travel through the corridor at the projected levels of growth in the preferred alternative, and then conducted additional coordination, again, to make sure that the proposed improvements to the network were meeting the vision and goals and policies of the Station Area Plan. And then the final piece that we're actually still working on is an in-depth corridor study along 120th Avenue Northeast, which is in the Station Area Plan vision as a main street, so really a hub of activity. So it, there's a lot of different types of uses along 120th. I think most of you all walked it with us last year. So we've got the cemetery, the Salt House Church, and the services they provide on that site, a King County Housing Authority site, the future Google Office campus, Costco, and a gateway to the future improvements at Forbes Lake Park. And so right now, our transportation team is working on a parcel-level analysis of that corridor to make sure that it really does meet the vision set for it in the Station Area Plan. So that work is in progress. They discussed that with Transportation Commission last night, and we'll bring you the results of that soon as well. We can go to the next slide. I'm not going to chalk through all of these, but just wanted to show you on the screen the intersections that were included in those various methods of study that I mentioned on the last slide. And so these were intersections selected where there were actual impacts measured, whether they were deemed significant or not. So these were studied in the draft environmental impact statement. They were further, many of them were further studied in those June Alternatives, and then several were added and studied in the final environmental impact statement. We can go to the next slide. Thanks. And so that resulted in what you see on the screen here, which is that- And so that resulted in what you see on the screen here, which is that list of recommended improvement projects. These are in the process of being added to our cap, into our capital improvement program. So these will all be added on the city's list of projects to be completed. They are on different timelines. Some of them will be built in different ways, for example, projects that are necessary because of a direct impact of redevelopment of a certain site. That would be one way that we'll get these projects built. Other projects are really network-wide projects. They add capacity in a way that might not be kind of tagged to a specific parcel. So those are ones that would go into the capital facilities plan at some point for the city to to fund and build through various methods. So in this pro, in this this map, sorry, you see corridor projects, which show as highlighted lines along streets. You also see intersection improvements. Those are the ones that are kind of denoted by a circle. So these are all the areas where the station area plan will make, has a, has a recommended improvement for some type of either vehicular improvement or active transportation network And I'm going to hand it over to Scott to take us home.
Okay, thanks, Allison. So I'm going to take you through our topic questions. They do differ a little bit from the questions that are in your memo. They do not, we are not going to include questions related to incentivized zoning as we're going to bring those to you at a future meeting. The the follow-up, follow-up meeting will be on November 10th, and I believe we're going to, we're going to shoot for trying to provide you some incentive program, incentivized zoning program at that point in time, and then follow up with any additional kind of Form Based Code questions and bring those back as a result from tonight's discussion. And that would be followed by a December hearing, we're hoping, with the, with the Planning Commission, and then tentative adoption in January of 2023. With that, we can move on to the questions for discussion. So the first questions that we have for you are a result of staff's work that we have provided to you tonight related to transitions. And well, I'm going to hover on this, this slide for a moment, a moment to kind of go over the the questions, and then Sandra can probably move back through the slides, back to the transition slide, so you can have discussions with seeing those studies. So the first question is, do the transition strategies adequately address the impacts of building mass across properties of different elevation? And is the alternative transition standard appropriate between commercial and residential zones where allowed height differences are significant? So we can move back through that. I don't, and maybe Brad can also walk through the transitions. Once again, if you have any additional comments or questions related to the different sky plane exposure angles that we are presenting here.
Voice to your right, sir.
Okay, I was just a little bit confused on, so you have a massing with a 25-degree transition angle versus the 30. Are you applying these in different case scenarios, or do you want us to give you feedback on which angle plane we prefer?
Yeah, so there, these could be applied differently under different circumstances. And that could be related to a difference in proposed height. If there's a proposed height of a significant amount between the maximum building height that is allowed in the neighboring low, lower-height district and the proposed height of of the of the, of the, of the building that will be developed, we could apply a different angle related to those differences, and we can tweak that to whatever amount that we think is necessary. If there's a difference in X height, then we can apply 25 degrees sky plane angle or a greater height, the 30.
Commissioner Single.
Like to go back. I'm, I guess I'm still a little confused about how, have you made an adjustment? Last time, we had a conversation about height differences relative to ABE versus relative to the common lot line. Have you proposed a change to how we're approaching this, or are we now still looking at maximum height as an absolute regardless of sea level?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to relate this to, you know, the proposed, so where we would take the, the base elevation to start, the vertical plane would be based on the common property line of the proposed development property, and it would be taken at the midpoint at that point, wherever that is. And then given, you know, and is allowed to go up to the top, starting the vertical plane at the top of the maximum allowed height for the neighboring property, so the lower-height zone. So in this case, 300, and if this was a 30-foot height limit on the neighboring property, this would go up 30 feet from 325, and then start the transition at either the 25 or 30. And this allows for consistency across, you know, all properties and how we would calculate this. It wouldn't have to take any kind of special math to figure out, like, what is a neighboring property, what's the average over there? We're going to take it from the midpoint grade of the common property line.
I think one of the follow-ups from last time was trying to understand how elevation differences, and there are a few pretty stark elevation differences between property lines, between adjacent properties, might cause the perceived height difference to be greater than the 30-foot allowed height difference that's in the, in the code. Do we have an understanding of whether height differences are going to make, are going to cause transitions to not trigger when the perceived height might be more than 30 feet?
I think I can, I can jump in and clarify that the, the need for the transition strategy is triggered by the allowed, the allowed height across zones. So that is, that does not factor in what any elevations are of the actual properties. So they'd be triggered at the dashed lines that you see on the screen. So the trigger for the transition is, is just based on the allowed height. Is that the clarification that you're?
Yeah, I guess there's two, there's two things I'm trying to get my head around. One is, do we have situations where, independent of, where we have big enough height differences between adjacent properties, that even though the allowed height difference between adjacent zones may be less than 30 feet, the effective height difference is greater than 30 feet because of a height differences between adjacent properties, they have a physical height difference between the adjacent properties? That's the first question. The second question is, I'm not quite sure I understand how the vertical plane is accounting for the base height, the ABE, of the adjacent properties to ensure that we're not sort of starting the mitigations where, at less than a 30-foot or at more than a 30-foot kind of vertical, vertical plane is perceived from the lower property.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can maybe, so I think to answer the first part, and then I'd like to have maybe Brad walk us through the example from 128th and 85th, because I think that's the situation that's of, of most concern, is one where we have the commercial development along 85th that's going to be higher than the, the neighboring properties. Yeah, this one. As to the, the first question of if we have differences in height or across grade in places where we might not identify a transition being triggered through the code right now, we have transitions actually applying a kind of along most of the boundaries of where we're looking at rezoning. And so I'm, I'm pretty confident that we've caught it, but I, we can take another look and see if there might be situations where we've, haven't identified a transition where there's a significant topo change. But I think we've been pretty thorough in where we've identified they would apply. And Brad, maybe could you walk us through that, the second part of the question?
Sure. So, so i- in this particular case, let me get my annotation tool. So in this particular case, the actual property line actually extends down to where these trees are. And so those, those trees would be included as part of, so the property line is kind of somewhere like that. And so the transition would be going up from that property line and then starting the angle. So that's what's setting that, that's what's setting the, the cut that you're seeing in the buildings here. And so that's based, you know, that's not based on, the ABE is, is just determining what the building height would be. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the transition per se, it's just providing the common framework for how we measure building height. And so that's going to be based on the site's, you know, individual topography relative to where the building's being placed. But the consistency, as Scott was saying, of having the, the midpoint elevation be the, the point that we're anchoring to for the transition height ensures that we're reflecting that topographic starting point when we start drawing that vertical plane that goes up to 30 feet and then kind of goes over.
Okay, I understand. I'm not sure I'm comfortable yet, just because of the property line is, it's a, it's a definable definition, but it does mean that the vertical plane could be effectively higher than 30 feet relative to the adjacent property because of grade. But at least I, I understand what we're doing now.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Brad, can you take us to the other example that looks like this but is on 120th? Thank you. So you mentioned specifically about, I guess, the previous slide, that those trees would stay there. Do you know if the trees that are currently blocking much of the view of this building would remain? And, because if they don't, that's a completely different look.
Yeah, that's a good question. Allison, Scott, you, you might know better than me whether these trees are on the, which property they belong on, and also whether the tree retention policy that the city had would, would keep them there.
We'll, we'll look up the, this location. I would think that they are on the subject property, but, or at least, no, I'm sorry, on the, on the properties that are where the townhomes are. But Allison will take a look at that real quick.
Well, and then noting again whether they're part of plan to, we'd have to retain them for the tree code or what have you.
Yeah, they, they do look like they're on the property to the, to the south. And in general, our, our tree retention code would favor or require retention of, of larger trees that are in those required yards or along, along property lines. You know, there is, there is not an absolute in that if there's unavoidable development impacts, but the, the code heavily favors retaining those types of trees in those locations.
Okay. Well, I, I think I agree with some of my fellow commissioners who express significant concern with how that could look like.
Yeah, I think what you're going to, what you're looking at here might, might reflect, like, well, there's, there's a definite height difference, you know, between the zones because we're at 150 feet. This is the most extreme of, of all the, of all the areas in the neighborhood mixed-use area where a transition would be triggered. And so therefore, this probably has the, the, the biggest impact. And there are situations where I can see in here, where, in this case, where the trees would have a high favorability of being retained for a couple of reasons. One would be that there's a required 15-foot buffer that's already established beyond the property line, that there is existing tree code that would highly favor their retention. In addition, there's a lot of bonuses given through the green factor that's a, that's already established, and hopefully a pretty low bar for any developer who is like trying to at least achieve a minimum green factor score to, you know, you, use existing, you know, trees that could be retained in that area, including some enhanced, you know, enhancement in that land, in that required buffered area that could further like, you know, mask the, the building with additional trees. Again, there, I think what we're trying to kind of express here in, in both of these scenarios is there's a scenario where, yes, the building height is greater, is the building height maximum is greatest here. This is an example also of a situation where the neighboring properties would have a higher point in which the transition would start. And therefore, maybe the, you know, the, the appearance of a mass minus the trees, right, could, could seem greater in areas where it has lower topography on the neighboring property. You might say that the, the same could be true, you know, in certain areas and in certain But what we're trying to do with the proposal is to, is to kind of create some level of certainty in how you apply the code and, and how the, the code would, you know, would, would affect not only the development capacity, but if we felt that, you know, the extremes of whatever is being proposed is great, greater, regardless of the situation where the height maximum is, is perceived lesser or greater, that we just kind of create a, a, a base where we say, okay, well, the height is 50 feet greater, so we're going to apply a 30-foot sky plane angle, regardless of, of the situation. And therefore, you, you kind of build in a kind of certainty in, in how the, the development standards are applied, and you kind of build, also help with mitigating at least a little bit of, of the, the perceived massing.
Can I just say thank you for putting these massing designs together? This really, really helps this discussion. So, thank you for, for really spending some time getting this so we can look at it. I think Commissioner Rutherford has a.
Yeah, um, thank you, Chair. On this topic of transitions, I, I think I understood from Commissioner Single some concerns that were on my mind, but I don't think maybe you, I don't know, maybe I should just speak for myself, but. So the, yeah, yeah, so the, the problem that I, the potential problem I see, and maybe I'm getting too academic and theoretical, is that when we have large sites with large transitions and elevation, either along the length of the property line or across the entirety of the, of the building footprint, you, you can end up with a situation where the, the facade that is facing the neighboring, neighboring buildings is, is regulated not really to, with respect to its, its neighboring properties, but rather more with respect to the, the, the form of the terrain that the building is being built on, which is not nearly as important to the neighboring property as how that facade that faces the property presents itself. So ideally speaking, So ideally speaking, what I'd be far more interested in is regulating based on the facade as the properties face each other rather than on the average elevation. We should be looking at, over the course of this elevation or over the course of this property line, how do the buildings need to adapt along that property line where it's changing dramatically rather than just taking the average? And I understand this, it might be making, maybe it makes it difficult to administer. Maybe it makes it difficult to build to. I would think that we would still be able to achieve the same level of certainty of what you could build on that site with this method. Maybe the tools aren't there to support this, but that's, I don't know. I don't know if that's speaking at all to what Commissioner Single was trying to get to or not, or if I've been any more successful at articulating it or not.
I think I'm hearing something of a desire to look at a maximum facade height relative to a property line, but at intervals that might capture varying topography across a property line. And I'm looking at Brad's box on our screen to see if he has any thoughts or comments on that to share with the commission.
My understanding, Allison, was that Commissioner Rutherford was talking about the adjacent facade condition rather than the property line at more frequent intervals, although you could potentially accommodate, you know, one could accommodate the other, but it might be worth getting clarification before I respond, just to make sure I understand.
Yeah, I am more interested in how the facades relate to each other, how the neighboring facades that face each other relate to each other more so than, you know, the average along the entire property line or the average of the entire building elevation.
So to that point, Commissioner, we could think about that. I think it's an interesting idea. We could think about that. I think that, as you already identified, I think applicability and administrative consistency would be the things that we'd have to figure out how to do, just like from a methodology standpoint. But conceptually, I can certainly see the merit of that kind of an approach because what it would accomplish would, it would better reflect what the experience would be of the adjacent property owners or adjacent tenants. So from that perspective, I could certainly see the merit of it. I think it would just be a question more on the methodology and consistent applicability from an administrative side.
Can I jump in and just add one additional reason that we started using property lines and kind of following down that path was that that's a known point rather than having to go on to an adjacent piece of property, conduct a survey and calculate an ABE on a property that you're not developing. And so I think that the, not that it would be impossible, the property line is an easier known quantity since ABE, so the allowed facade height of a particular building on a property would change relative to its ABE. And ABE changes based on where you're placing a building on a property. And so that changes based on location of the building as you move it around, on the shape of a building as you draw it in different ways. And so, again, not impossible, but one of the reasons that we started looking at the property lines as something of a little bit more fixed point, but appreciate, yeah, the intent of where you're going with that.
Commissioner Single?
Commissioner Rutherford and I are operating, again, along the same wavelength except he's more articulate than I am. Another approach that we could imagine that might simplify the administration is to look at the elevation, not of a property line, but of a property line plus the set, some minimum required setback toward the adjacent building. So I think facade to facade is the ideal, but if we're looking for something that's deterministic, we might be able to do something that brings us closer to the adjacent building without necessarily having to do the same level of survey.
Yeah, just to kind of respond to that, in this scenario, I can imagine that if we push this back, let's say over to the buffer, right, at 15 feet and brought it back, then you take that midpoint, and that would be the starting point for the midpoint, that'd be pretty favorable. But if we moved over to the next property where it's higher than the neighboring property and it actually has quite a deep slope that you can start going up, it doesn't favor the neighboring property. No matter how we slice this, there's going to be differences when you start the starting point at any point in time across the property. So just to kind of keep that in mind.
One other...
Yeah, go ahead.
Hopefully a much faster follow-up on this. Oh, actually, it's the other case study, the 128th. I noticed that there's the, let's see, I guess that would be the, the fatter end of the building. It's along, right along 128th. So that is a much deeper building than the rest of it. Is that to imply that that depth would not be possible on the rest of that building?
Commissioner, just to make sure I understand, you're talking about this piece of the building and why that doesn't show up in the remainder here?
Yeah, exactly.
Mm-hmm. That's a fair question. So we actually talked about this when we were massing this building. You could certainly, you could certainly, you know, this is a residential building, so it tends to follow kind of a double-loaded corridor, something like that. So often, those would take on additional bars that might extend into the lot like that, for example. For simplicity's sake, we only showed it on the corner because that would be the most likely place to put it, and we didn't want to get too detailed. We wanted to show a code-compliant building. We didn't want to get, as we often do, sucked into designing the building. But yes, conceivably, the applicant could do that. That wouldn't be super unheard of. In that case, those bars would follow a similar pattern, is what you see here. That is to say, they would have to terrace at the top in a similar way. So if it would be helpful to the commission, we could certainly mock that up. I think you would see similar results, although obviously the tree line, you know, varies and things like that across the site.
Okay. So if we were to go beyond allowing, go change the regulations so that we could do more than just double-loaded corridors and, say, point access blocks or that sort of thing with single stairs, like I understand are allowed in Seattle, that might also allow for that flexibility here.
I feel like you're getting ahead of yourself on this.
I know, I know, I know. But I mean, I'm like looking down the road.
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on transitions? It sounds like we're interested in at least looking at some other way of looking at things as long as it is a simple, straightforward. I don't think we want to add any complication to this. So if there is an opportunity to look at some other way that's more reflective of the individual site, we're interested. But I think, I think we're in agreement that we don't want to make things more complicated. Commissioner Heiser?
Thank you, Chair. Allison, you brought up the fact that we're going to get some changes to the low-density zoning.
We are not going to get changes to the low-density zoning.
We're not getting changes. Okay. So I guess my, as we've gone through this for weeks, seeing it as a bigger part of the puzzle, if we can go back to the existing zoning map. There we go. What, you know, are we going to be doing a Phase 3 to rezone some of these, you know, our 30-foot low-density in certain areas? I'm just, there's just such a huge transition between height. Do we have a plan for that?
So at this time, we would, the thought is that we would complete the station area plan work with the four districts that you see on the screen, the commercial, mixed-use, neighborhood, mixed-use, urban flex, and civic mixed-use. What we are embarking on starting next year in earnest is the comprehensive plan update, which would be an opportunity to look at kind of a broader low-density residential zoning in the city. And I know the commission has expressed interest in the past in our missing middle regulations, so the allowances that we already have on the books, and how, you know, if those regulations are achieving the vision and the intent behind the adoption of those back in 2020. So the thought is that the station area plan would not include a rezone or changing of the low-density zones here, but there might be a broader look at it citywide.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I mean, missing middle housing still will have the, I would imagine still have the same heights, right? About 30 feet generally. So, yeah, I just, I'm wondering how that works in the broader outlook for those pieces, you know, as we look at this, 85 to 30. So, thank you, Allison.
Commissioner Heiser, if I could just chime in, excuse me, really fast. You know, there's two approaches, right, to zoning to deal with height differences. One is the one that you're talking about where you have this sort of stair-step down zoning, right, in height from higher buildings to lower buildings, right? That's one approach. And then the approach I think that we're looking at here is using transitions, right, using landscape buffers and building step backs and skyplanes to moderate the difference. I mean, there are two ways of solving sort of the same problem, right? The stair-stepping approach doesn't necessarily make the, your living environment better if you're living at the bottom of the building, right, that's next to the taller one, even if your building is just a little bit smaller. So, you know, we're really trying to, I think, be intentional about why the transitions, why these particular transitions are being used. So I just wanted to mention that. And then I just wanted to be really frank, I think, about what the single-family districts, how those are likely to evolve in the future. I think it would be pretty tough politically to make them, to make the residential zones a lot taller than they are now, right? I mean, as you know from living in Kirkland, you know, views are very sensitive and topography is an issue as well, right, for the same reasons that we're talking about height here. So I think, you know, we'll probably be trying to look at new building typologies and new missing middle housing typologies in those districts, but it's hard to imagine that they would go up from like 30 feet to 50 feet or something like that, or 30 feet to 40 feet. So I just wanted to be really frank about how those are likely to change in the future with the comp plan update.
Yeah, so I guess with, maybe I wasn't clear enough. I'm actually asking about turning those, rezoning those from residential to, you know, commercial or what have you, just from a standpoint of maybe the highest and best use of that land. I just didn't know if that was part of the plan, you know, sooner rather than later.
Something taller you're talking about, I think, right?
Yes. Yeah, not, I mean, I would assume that would not continue to be the highest and best use residential. So options maybe for those landowners? I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, and that could be on the table too for the comp plan update. I think, you know, we'll get into this when we talk about the comp plan later, but we have a lot of zone capacity in the city right now, right, with the station area plan, with all the rezoning that we're talking about right now. We are, we have a lot of space for a lot of new population and a lot of new jobs. So there's not really a lot of pressure on us, I think, with the comp plan update to do rezoning unless we really, really want to. And there might be good reasons to do what you're talking about, like rezone residential to commercial. But we just have, I think, the thing to think about as we go into that discussion is we have a lot of capacity right now that's unbuilt that is to be developed. So it's just a matter of how much growth we want to accommodate in the city.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that.
Perhaps, could we also maybe get just like a couple of photos of, like, actual, like, I really appreciate the massing, but maybe a couple of, like, photo examples of, like, the low-density, you know, the low rise to the mid-rise, like, what that looks like? Because I've seen, I've seen pictures of areas that have the, like, single-family residential right next to taller buildings, and it looks really good. Like, it can be done really well. And so I think maybe it might help to have just a few pictures to show what it looks like rather than just, you know, a big square next to neighborhoods.
Yeah, thanks for the suggestion. I think we can get something like that together.
Anything, Commissioner Rutherford?
Yeah, since we jumped on to neighborhood residential, I definitely have some things to say on this. I really kind of hoped that this could be sort of the trial of the upper half of a missing middle that we haven't yet gotten around to beyond duplexes and triplexes in Kirkland. And there's also, you know, like, many other form-based codes, you use a transect-based model wherein what we're seeing along 85th Street would be like a transect level five, which is, you know, an urban core. And then the existing low-density residential would be a transect level three, which is suburban. And usually between that, you have a transect level four, which is a general urban, and maybe it goes like three or four floors, maybe a three-floor facade with living space behind the roof line or inside the roof line. And that can allow for very, more like small-scale, small-scale multiplexes, you know, not the big multiplexes, but that's sort of the upper end of the missing middle. Now, that said, I understand if what we want to do is just like, let's get the station area plan wrapped up and manage our budget and get this all like out the door and then come back to it, I can appreciate that. But I would hesitate to say, you know, to suggest that we just deal with all low-density residential as its entirety in the future without exploring really what could that medium density look like around these areas. So I don't know if that's kind of getting what Commissioner Heiser was, okay. We'll see.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment, Commissioner Rutherford. I think that one of the things that we'd point out that really kind of limits what one could do with neighborhood residential here is that the station area plan adopted maximum heights that are really just standardizing height across the district. So it didn't, it didn't adopt significant height increases. And so we'd still be limited in most of those areas to the 25 to 30 feet that's already zoned there. And we already allow accessory dwelling units and missing middle housing types there. And so we didn't feel like there was, there's not a big difference to introduce a lot more density there. And so the difference in the work would really be taking the existing zoning and creating a form-based code for it. And there's certainly merits in that, but we didn't think that changing the way that we zoned the area would, in and of itself, given the heights that we adopted in the station area plan for that district, really make a significant change in the density we'd expect to see there. And I hope that gets at the question a little bit.
Yeah, there's, well, beyond just height changes, because I understand, you know, maybe this isn't the time for looking at that further. We could look at reducing side setbacks, reducing front setbacks, bringing the build closer to the street to create a more well-formed street edge. There's, you know, maybe the possibility of accessory commercial units, but that could be a whole nother big discussion further down the road. But also, another part of, you know, smart code is one of these other form-based codes. And one of the things that they suggest in that is, like, after 20 years, you identify what are, you say, okay, this is what the transect level is at this point, and then you say, oh, we're going to bring it up, say, in 20 years to a higher use. And that might be more palatable for some of these areas. If you, you know, draw a line around this and say, in 20 years, this becomes a general urban transect in anticipation and allowing for that. And then you can, you know, in 2044, say, as we said, you know, two decades ago, and it allows for that in the future.
I'm going to steer us back to the conversation at this point. I think we've got what we need for this question. So I do want to have that conversation about the other stuff, but I think let's try and focus on the questions at hand tonight and then look at that. Maybe we can have a further discussion when we talk about our work plan next year.
Commissioner Single?
I believe one of the questions that staff and our consultants is asking us to weigh in on is the 25 versus 30-degree skyplane angle. And I guess... And I guess, I'll just say, just to put something out there, I think the, I'm a, I'm generally a fan of shallower height increases, but it's hard to kind of, kind of where we're at. I appreciate the, the images that were presented tonight, but it's hard to see if that, if there are exceptions where I would say, well, the steeper height increase is okay. But my default is to sort of go for shallower, shallower increases, recognizing that that may affect square footage.
Okay. Continue on.
Okay. So, yeah, thanks for that feedback. We'll have many more housing discussions in the future here as we update the comprehensive plan. But staying on topic, let's go to the civic muse, civic mixed use zone. We have two questions for you here. First is, are there, are there any draft regulation standards that should be adjusted, such as setbacks, upper story setbacks, maximum floor plates that would be appropriate? And are there any additional standards that should be considered in support of the planned vision for this area? This area meaning Lake Washington High School.
For starters, have, has the school district weighed in on this?
Yes, they have. They provided, I believe they emailed the commission about this and they are in favor of the draft code, yes.
Okay. Doesn't look like anybody, Commissioner Heiser?
I'm wondering about outside of the setbacks, upper story setbacks, all of that, one of the items that Sandra brought up tonight was the green factor criteria. Are we discussing any of that tonight? Is that, I mean, as it's part of the form based code that we're putting forward?
Yeah, so the, the green factor has already been adopted, but it would be applied here. Allison, if you want to kind of go over it again, maybe, and we can kind of discuss that, as it relates to this zone, is that correct?
Yes, well, I have a specific, I have a specific question in terms of green, the green factor. Did you want me to go ahead with that specific question?
Go ahead.
Okay. The, so we're looking at many very tall buildings going in directly on the freeway. Is that correct? So even outside of maybe the, the Google buildings, what we're talking about is 150 feet. I don't think any of us have talked about sound pollution and maybe what we can do to mitigate some of that. And if we've discussed maybe an idea of requiring a green walls, anything, basically what's going to be happening is we're going to get the sound from 405 reverberating off all of those buildings, right back down into Houghton, downtown, east of Market, all of really great areas that are neighborhood areas. And standing in my yard in Rose, in South Rose Hill recently, you know, we've got quite a bit of traffic noise when it rains, depends on when the wind is, where the wind's coming from. But I'm just concerned that if we don't have any sort of requirements from some of these developers, we're going to have a bunch of kids who can't play on their yards because it's just too loud. It depends on how all that sound funnels, but we really haven't discussed any way of mitigating some of that. And I do think that falls under the planning commission's purview. I could be wrong, Angela.
No, I mean, I think talking sound and green walls and all of that.
I just didn't want this, you know, us to go move forward and then this never having come up, because it's going to be a real big change, I think.
Adam, Ellie, did one of you want to?
Yeah, I can chime in a little bit. It's a really good question and it was something that was brought up actually a lot, Commissioner Heiser and the, with the supplemental environmental impact statement. And we did actually ask our consultant to look at the echoing effect. And what it found actually is that the echoing, that once the noise echoes from the, basically from the freeway to the building and then back again to the west, that it's actually less than the noise generated from the freeway moving west anyway, right? So I guess, I don't want to get too technical here and we should probably send the section of the EIS that discussed that, but noise diminishes on a logarithmic scale. So it's a very dramatic reduction as you increase distance. So when something is echoing, right, when it's coming from the freeway, bouncing off a building and then coming back the other way, there's a very significant diminishment of the energy in that noise. And so the consultant ultimately found that the echoing effect would not be significant. It would not add to the, it would not add to the noise on sort of the west side of the freeway. So we can, and we can get you that analysis. It's a very technical analysis and kind of hard to talk about, but.
I would be interested in that because I know whenever sound transit puts up a wall, you know, somebody on the opposite side gets a nice new, you know, refractory noise situation, you know? So I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how that works with the commercial building, but I can tell you a wall, you know, we've been on the other side of, of the wall, a wall being constructed and then bent on, you know, it's changed the noise in our yard for sure. So it's just something I think is going to be very impactful for the city. But yeah, I appreciate seeing that study. I mean, if it would explain how that's not going to be, you know, a significant issue.
Yeah.
And, oops, sorry.
I'm just going to echo that because I've been, I've been from the start saying, hey, we're, we're opening up the sound wall to put in the pick up and drop off. We are, you know, building buildings across the freeway and, you know, the neighborhoods already are complaining about noise as is, and we will have an increase in noise. So what we should require is at least a minimum of trees planted to help soften the noise and it should be part of the development. I mean, more so than what is current standards. So we should show the public more than just saying, well, our studies show, because you're going to have every public coming back and saying, my yard is so loud, because that's what we heard, especially Highlands neighborhood, Everest neighborhood, because we've had substantial development in the last few years where the larger trees have been taken down and the noise has increased substantially. So I, I do think to be good to the public, very minimal costs of planting trees and doing things to design buildings to maybe minimize noise would be very well thought of and should be part of our code.
If I could respond, Vice Chair Heiser, and I think this gets at Commissioner Heiser's question about the green factor as well. That's, I think, the, the very reasons that we went the route of the green factor, which isn't really a, a change from our base landscape requirements in the current code. And what the green factor does is it weighs heavier, the type of landscaping that adds more function to a site. So one example of that is that we already have planting requirements for trees on commercial, with commercial development. We already have those types of landscaping standards. The green factor goes a bit further by weighing heavier things like giving trees more adequate space to grow. So it factors in how soil depth is given to trees. And so it's, it also weighs heavier things like green walls. They're not required, but you are given green factor points. So to achieve the minimum green factor required, we would weigh heavier functional landscaping. So we're trying to incentivize people to do exactly what you're saying, which is not just plant trees, but plant trees with ample space to mature and grow and add canopy, incentivizing things like green roofs and green walls, incentivizing things like bio retention, so really adding function to the landscaping on site instead of just making it an aesthetic thing. And so the green factor was exciting from that perspective. So there's a, a minimum requirement of green factor score for all properties in the station area and the base requirements. And then in addition to that, in the incentive zoning program, you can earn additional capacity by achieving another kind of bonus minimum green factor score. So just, I think it starts getting at, but would be interested to hear any specific feedback on the, the green factor, any of the elements you see in it.
Commissioner Heiser?
Yes, thank you, Allison. I'm, so what I, when you sent out the email, kind of summarizing your meeting with, is it NAOP? I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't weight some of these a little higher, there's a lot of options that you can do that are the less expensive options, but don't necessarily provide the public benefit that we are looking for maybe in specifically with sound. I don't, I couldn't tell you how much a green wall costs. I can tell you that a lot of these developments can probably afford to do that for the general, you know, general good of the public. But I want to make sure we're not doing this thing where we're saying, these are options if you want to go higher, but we know some of these aren't really that realistic and so you can choose the ones that are more realistic for you. It's, it's just hard to know, and it's hard to know how they're weighted without examples of that. You know, will all of these buildings that line the freeway there choose to do, you know, they're obviously required to do solar panels, but choose to do things that just benefit that space as opposed to, you know, helping out with eliminating some of the noise pollution and that sort of thing? I just would hate to see the buildings get, you know, amenities that we say the public can come into, like their, you know, their interior park spaces and that sort of thing. And instead, they're, they're going to do that because that's generally going to be less expensive. But it's not really as much of a public benefit as some of, you know, some sound deadening or something, you know?
We're going to, we're going to be talking incentives in the November meeting more.
Are we getting examples?
If the, if the commission, sorry, specifically wanting examples of green factor and how certain developments have hit green factor, we did do some examples in our work to develop that so we can provide green factor examples. And then, yes, we do plan to discuss the incentive zoning program structure more with the commission.
Angela?
Yeah, I, I'd see you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I guess we'll leave it for.
Yeah, but yes, examples would be good.
Yeah, because I want to make sure we're getting the public benefit.
Okay. Commissioner Tim Chisholm?
Thanks, sorry about that. I just didn't know if you.
That's all right. I saw you.
I would just ask that this noise study and any relevant information be sent out to us whenever possible before the public hearing and that maybe if it is a complex study that, you know, staff can prepare a memo for us explaining what it says if it's in a complex format. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments on the civic mixed use specifically? Vice Chair Heiser?
Okay, since the civic mixed use is pretty much Lake Washington High School property, I'm going to say, I, I don't mean to be not being complimentary to the neighborhoods around. The one thing that is nice about this property is the majority of the actual neighborhoods have a street that is a nice buffer between the property, because there is a street that mainly goes, and I don't know, is there any yards that back up to Lake Washington High School? I know there's the church on the backside, but isn't there a street basically separating the majority of this property?
The, it, the property's western boundary is bounded by parcels. I'm just looking at the map here. I think some of them on the south boundary also kind of butt up against it. Oh, no, 70th runs, so yeah, just on the west side.
I would say, I would like to limit this property only in the areas really that it's going to affect, you know, neighboring properties, but I would like to see, you know, being able to maximize in the future for education since we didn't get a, you know, school in the, you know, station area, that this parcel should be maximized for the future because we're going to need the school space.
Are you thinking more than 75 feet is your point?
I would like to see, yes, I would like to see more. And I don't want to be hard on the neighboring properties, but I also want to see that future capacity we don't have to rezone for, that we allow, I mean, there is going to be limits in what the school district can afford, but I don't want to see the schools hurt in the future.
You want them to be the limit, not us?
Yes. Thank you for saying that nicer than I was. So I guess this is the one area where I am, I'm very for trying to maximize everything with the boundaries against the residential, having a very nice transition so they are not affected negatively.
I'm going to pass this to Commissioner Tim Chisholm since he's our resident school-focused guy.
Thank you, Chair Rosman. The, I mean, I guess regarding the, the Lake Washington High School property, I would just defer to the Lake Washington School District and I would be, you know, fine with giving them kind of what they ask for as long as what they ask for is reasonable. The, you know, original recommendation of what the school district really wanted was additional area within the station area plan. The development agreement, you know, whatever we zone this as, I just wouldn't want that. I mean, if we zone it higher, that's fine, but I wouldn't want that to become a reason why we don't need additional school capacity within the station area plan, which there is language in the development agreement that Google, Google and the city are trying to work cooperatively to find that additional space. Thank you.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at some of the other attributes of the zoning for civic mixed use other than the height and speaking especially to how could the development of that site be maximized while also respecting the adjacent uses as Commissioner Heiser was, was getting at. And so I see 80% maximum lot coverage. I think that could probably, I don't see any reason why that shouldn't be allowed to be 100%, understanding that there is going to also, there will be trees and green open space. I think there's other requirements for that on the site, even if the entire site is, is developed at its maximum. But then I would focus on probably the, the setbacks on the west side of that site adjacent to the low density residential. But I think that that's probably already more clearly addressed by the transition, the transition requirements, at least for the, the part of the, of the area that's zoned to or proposed for 75 feet. It could become more of a challenge on the south part of that zoned to 45 feet. But I also don't think this would be a significant imposition on the, on the school site, because I, I anticipate they would have a driveway as they do today along that western edge anyways for access around the site. So even if that were to be required to be, you know, say, 20 feet, I don't think, I'm guessing that probably wouldn't be a significant imposition to the, to the development of that site and would ensure that that is, you know, adequately buffered between the, the school site, which is on a higher level than the, the adjacent low density residential to the west. Let's see, other attributes, maximum floor plate. I. Let's see, other attributes, maximum floor plate, I don't really know why we would need to regulate that, there's already many other regulations about how the building represents itself, its physical form. I don't see any need for us to constrain that. I can see how that could be useful for ensuring adequate circulation on each floor within the school site, and I wouldn't want to constrain the school district in that respect.
I wonder if we could just reach back out to the school district, you know, they said, yeah, we were good with, they were good with this, but maybe say, hey, is there anything more that you would like us to consider? Because, you know, we can talk about all these things that we think might help them in the future, but they are probably going to know best about what they could possibly want, basically, like ask them what their dream world would be for this parcel, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair, Chair Rosman. And I think the only other thing I would note is that we have involved them, you know, very frequently through the entire process, including developing the station area plan itself, right, which established these heights. So we have actually been talking to them all along through this process, so it wasn't like we just presented the zoning to them and, right, they're reacting to it, they have actually seen it. But I think reaching out to them another time and.
I think there's also a different conversation when, you know, it's a back and forth versus a, hey, school district, what would be your, you know, perfect world?
Right.
So I think that might be nice to have before our next meeting. Do we have any other comments on civic mixed use at this point? Are we ready to move on to the next piece? All right.
Okay, I think these are going to be follow-up to the active street use requirement and the residential units in the urban flex district. So the questions are reading this like this, does the planning commission have any feedback on the proposed language to require active ground floor use? And does the planning commission have any feedback on the proposed language to restrict residential uses to the upper floors only in the urban flex district? I'll leave you a moment to kind of look and review these. I can also read these out loud.
Commissioner Allen?
Thank you. I really appreciated these, the level of information that you gave us on kind of each street frontage and what they could look like and such. I just have kind of a random question, though, because as pointed out in a couple of the treatments, that there isn't, something's not allowed, is you can't have a balcony on the porch roof. And it's just this little thing I captured, but I love balconies. And I think any opportunity we can have to give people some outdoor space, or grow some fresh herbs or something, than just having four walls, that we should take advantage of that. So can you just explain to me the reasoning behind not allowing that?
Brad, do you want to take that? I believe that's.
I think actually Allison might be better positioned, because that's a carryover from an existing code provision, from another section of the existing code, so Allison might be better positioned to speak to it.
Yeah, we could dig into it to confirm this, but I think that restriction is for porches that are extending into the required yard, so the porch in these cases isn't allowed encroachment into the required yard, so it's like, in the yard is an exception. And so in those cases, we would be minimizing the massing of that porch by not allowing someone to then put a balcony on top of it. So that's something that we do in our existing low-density zones today, is we have a required yard, the porch is allowed to extend seven feet into that required yard, but it is limited to a ground floor porch essentially. So that's how it's applied in this code as well, it's specifically tied to when it's encroaching. If it were outside of the required yard, you could put a balcony on top of it.
So I guess, I'm wondering if that's necessary, or we could look at percentages, or like maximum square feet even. You look at a lot of older buildings, right, and they have these Juliet balconies, so you're not doing a lot outside, which you might be, you know, they might only be two feet wide sometimes, but it's a chair, and it's some flowers or something. I'm just, I'd like to ditch it. Or me?
Is it on the street?
It is, it's, yeah, it's more people looking down at the street, it makes for a nice and kind of mixed look too, as people have different flowers and such. Anyway, thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Vice Chair Reiser?
Okay, one of the things that I really like about this is because, you know, I'm a huge proponent of trying to get retail on the first floor of buildings. And the only thing that I didn't like about this is that, and on design review, we saw that to kind of get around the retail space, we had, the lobbies got bigger and bigger. I would like to see some kind of language that wasn't so vague on how big their lobbies were going to be, so that we did try to encourage as much active space in retail that would benefit the public.
So beyond, so you think 20% is too much? Is that your point?
I do, and I think it's a little bit vague for, because we started to see things like bike storage, and, you know, I also, we saw things like the, you know, a lot of the newer buildings have had their gym for the building down on the first floor. I just want to see maybe a little bit more regulation on, okay, we're encouraging them, or maybe as an incentive, more space towards retail. So I would like to see that goods and services are provided for people who are going to be living in the station area.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think generally speaking, notwithstanding Vice Chair's comments, the one which I agree with, the one area that I'm a little bit concerned about is the use of word blank walls in the first paragraph here. I think what our intent is, is to discourage, I'll just say opaque walls, right? We really want windows, you know, you're talking about storefronts or things that people can look into. The language blank walls suggests that like, a wall that has art on it is okay, and I think that's actually not our intent. So I would actually suggest that we just say opaque walls or walls is really what we're going after, I'm not sure blank is helping.
Sure, I might, as long as we're looking at the specific wordage here of this paragraph, I look at kitchen prep, cooking areas, and I think there's a lot of restaurants that actually are trying to make those areas visible, and that's part of having the activity, is showing that, like, you know, part of that's enticing the people to come in, like, you got a clean kitchen, you have people like folding wontons in funny ways, or a cool-looking bakery going on, where you're going to have the cooking or prep area. So I understand we don't want the dishwasher probably, or the trash or recycling rooms, and restaurants are only going to feel comfortable showing you, I assume, what they would be happy to have the public see. But I don't necessarily think that those areas should be 86 from the frontage.
So I am just going to make the other comment on why I think 20% is okay, that I would not want to see it below that number, is that as much as we do want these retail and commercial spaces, like, they can be really hard to fill. And I would much rather have a space filled than empty with a sign saying, future retail here. So perhaps this is this 80/20, but I would, perhaps maybe we'd have some more flexibility on what retail means. So is it a dentist office, is it, you know, other kinds of commercial spaces? Like, I realize we don't want to have it as like residential housing, but, you know, otherwise we end up with a number of empty retail spaces that stay empty for a good amount of time. I mean Slater 116 is a great example, they have never filled that entire frontage. And honestly, at this point, I would rather have one of those spaces be residential than empty like it's been for five, 10 years. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm reading this a little bit differently than you are. So that 80% says basically active space, that includes their lobbies, so basically, I just wanted it refined a little bit. It's not 80% retail, that's 80% including their lobbies and.
I think it says up to 20% may be used for non-habitable uses, including lobbies.
I know, but the first, the active street level says 80%, that doesn't say 80% retail. That, you know, so I kind of want a little bit of a more refined nature of what, because in that 80%, if you're a developer, you could, how much, is it 20% retail, and, you know, 60% of it is your lobby and active space of your gym? So that's where I'm saying I would like it more refined. And I agree with you, services are not just retail, they are a dentist, they're a barber, they are other uses than, I think one of the failures we have had in Kirkland is that we get retail and then it's filled by a mortgage office or a, you know, a financial office, that, yes, it could have been up on an upper floor, or it could have been, the average person, they're not going to stop there for their 10-minute need and leave, but we should have a broader view of what we view as a good and service.
Just a clarifying point here, the paragraph includes commercial uses, the broader definition of commercial uses does include office with that, so that is included. I do hear you about lobby areas, is included in this, in this definition, so we can definitely come back and refine.
I would just say, you know, because we just found on design review where we would be fighting almost to get, because the language was vague, and the developer would not really want to have a retail spot, and we would get bike rooms and we would get workout rooms for the building only in this space that, you know, was deemed active space, but had the original intent of being a good or service that could have been provided.
I guess the question is then, because, you know, in theory, a retail or commercial space can be rented, so it is a higher income use for that property. So if we're seeing larger lobbies, maybe we need to consider why that is? Maybe can we have shallower spaces? You know, maybe looking at different flexible options, because, you know, there's a reason why the lobbies get big, because in a lot of these buildings, the commercial spaces don't get rented, and so there's, you know, a better use for it to at least be something that's like a big, pretty lobby. So, I mean, I get it, and I would love to see more retail spaces, but maybe, I don't know how we look at that, but maybe some shallower, you know, maybe it's a shallower, narrower band, and then you have more behind space or something like that. I don't know if we can look into something like that, but I would not want to limit lobbies beyond what we already say without figuring out some more flexibility, because otherwise then we just get the empty space effect. Did we lose John? You're there, okay.
I'm here.
Okay, you just disappeared off my screen, so I don't know why, but you're there now. Okay, we're good. I don't know that we have any other comments at this point, so I'm going to say let's move on.
Yeah, I think there's a last question here that might tie back into the incentivized zoning program, and it asks, are there types of amenities in the incentivized zoning program, including performance space, affordable housing options, appropriate for phase-two regulating plan areas? So this is speaking towards not just what's been adopted for the commercial mixed use, but what we're trying to accomplish here in phase-two in the other regulating districts.
Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, Chair Rosman. I think I'm probably just looking for clarification, when we look at the stationary plan with the pretty colors in different neighborhoods, what I see is in the commercial, we have, you know, 85 slash 150, so we know what the base is, that you don't have to do kind of anything extra or special. And then if you want to get up to this use, you can do various things to achieve that. But when, like, I look at the neighborhood mixed use, right next to it, to the east, I see the 150 feet, and I'm wondering like, why do they get that without having to do anything additional? And really even continuing along that, we've got a lot of 85-foot buildings, but I wouldn't mind seeing like 65 slash 85. We're talking so much about opportunities here for affordable housing, and it just seems like that's a, we're looking at cash, right? Getting that from the commercial mixed use, and maybe for the 150-foot building, you know, maybe there's some by-your-way in or out of things as well. I just think there's a lot of opportunity that we're missing by not subjecting more of these lots to incentive zoning.
It's a great comment, Commissioner Allen, and I think I can provide a little bit of clarification. So the commercial mixed use district that's adopted does have that base allowed height and maximum allowed height. We, in hindsight, perhaps this was more confusing than we intended it to be, but we ended up stripping this map down to the maximum allowed height for the commission's discussion of the zoning standards, so we wanted to help you think about developing zoning standards for the maximum allowed height. However, I think nearly all of the neighborhood mixed use properties are anticipated to have an incentive zoning program applied to it, so once we get that calibrated correctly, we would be setting a base height for them. I think right now, we've discussed that being around 40 feet, which is down around where the base height is today, and then the maximum allowable would be the heights that you're seeing on the screen now. From our previous discussions, I think you picked up on not all properties are getting enough of an increase in their height or capacity to support an incentive zoning program, but I think just about everything, and again, the numbers are still moving around, but just about everything 60 to 65 feet and above has some space for incentive zoning, depending a bit on if the commission or council decides to increase any of the base requirements. So if we, as just an example, increased the inclusionary affordable housing requirements, that might take up kind of the full value of the upzone, but with what we're looking at right now, we're kind of playing with the numbers on incentive zoning for most of that neighborhood mixed use district. Yeah, thank you for the question, I'm glad we were able to clarify that.
So again, this is just kind of getting, with that clarification, this is just trying to get at the focus of affordable housing as the, as the first point of, or the highest incentivized element. I think we've, it might kind of hearken back to Commissioner Heiser's comments related to green factor, and maybe where those might be fine-tuned. related to, uh, green factor and maybe where those might be fine-tuned and adjusted for specific areas within the, um, within the regulating districts where we might modify or kind of identify areas where we could, you know, focus in on different incentives as well. So with that said, uh, in that mind, we're just kind of getting at like where the commission feels, um, how we can weight the incentives correctly in the, in these, in these other regulating districts.
I don't know if this is the place to talk about this or if this is a November meeting discussion, but, um, as far as weighting affordable housing, have we considered possibly weighting it based on just number of bedrooms versus number of units or square footage? So it, it does weight toward the three-bedroom plus, but instead of saying you get weight for three-bedroom, it's like the number of bedrooms that can sometimes lead to a higher number of the, the bigger units and just simplifying it. I, I don't know if this is ahead of today or not, but...
I can, I can ask our economic consultant about it. Right now, the thought was that we'd just be testing, um, units with bedroom counts at three or higher rather than weighting total number of bedrooms provided. But we can certainly ask the question and then bring it back to you at a future meeting.
And then we're gonna have a lot of time to talk about incentives in the next meeting, right? Anyone have any other comments now or we're gonna dig into this next month? So I think we're good for right now.
Great, I think that's all the questions we have for you here. Again, we'll be coming back, um, you know, uh, next month with, um, additional, um, study session that will go over the topics that we discussed tonight, uh, providing you feedback on, um, your, specifically your, your conversations, discussions about transitions, um, you know, um, maybe some additional information that we've received back from, uh, the Lake Washington School District related to, um, the civic mixed-use standards, obviously the incentivized zoning program. And, um, are there any other questions here? Oh, and, and yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the base height, bonus height incentivized, yeah, clarity on that. Oh, and the active, active use, that's right. I'm sorry.
Um, I would just like to ask one question and one of my concerns is that, um, because the Safeway site up there could possibly be redeveloped and we could lose a grocery store that is in a very large, uh, serving a large population. Shouldn't there be an incentive for grocery?
An incentive or is there a way to...
Well, or, uh, something because I, it seems like, okay, it would be very difficult if we did lose that in that area. So, um, and I, I, I think that is a concern and we should have an idea of, okay, if we do lose it, how do we gain it back in some other form?
It's a good question. Um, we haven't looked at that. Um, we had a lot of other community benefits that sort of rose to the top of the amenities that the community told us they wanted to see in the area. And I, I'm, perhaps the grocery store was taken for granted, but that didn't rise to the top of the benefits that you see represented in the incentive program structure. Um, so we could, we could examine it. It would take some, some additional study. I think that in the, in, in absence of specifically incentivizing it and providing more capacity for it, we're certainly attempting to provide a very flexible and predictable form-based zoning code that would be very easy to develop a multitude of, of types of services and, and commercial opportunities under. Um, but we had not looked at specifically incentivizing, uh, grocery.
I, what my fear is, is that in 20 years, you'll have a larger population in this area and that is a very large plot of land and it could, we could lose a grocery store that everyone kind of takes for granted in that area. And that serves all of Rose Hill. And we will have one possibly up at, um, Bridal Trails, but if that is not redeveloped, I don't think grocery...
And that's still a significant distance from...
Yeah. So I, I think in our planning, we do need to plan for this population having a grocery store someplace.
Commissioner Tim Chisen?
I, I agree with Commissioner Rice. The loss of the grocery store in Bridal Trails has been a disaster for that neighborhood. And, um, losing Safeway while the stationary plan is being built for a ultimate population of 20,000 people, I think would be disastrous. I, I would like to see further thought put into that. Thank you.
Continue. Noted. We'll make sure to talk about it.
Oh, okay, I'm done.
Yeah, okay. I think we're ready to move forward.
I think, yeah, I think you've given us a lot of food for thought and a lot of items to work on before we see you back on November 10th to talk about the form-based code again. Thank you for the comments and the thought.
This experience of appearing remotely has been very underwhelming and I don't really plan on doing it again. I, this is not how I envisioned it would, it would work. Maybe that's because nobody else is joining remotely and I'm the only one, but it's, doesn't feel like...
There is just some irony of you being the one that's virtual tonight. Anyway, let's move on. It'll be good to see you in person next month.
Well, I was going to, uh, well, I'll touch on, never, oh, okay, thanks. Oh, now I can see you. Now, now...
Oh.
So now, instead of seeing the slideshow, I can see the room. I hadn't been able to see the room before.
Oh, learning process. All right, shall we move on to the public hearing for the comp plan?
Are there people in the audience?
A couple.
Okay.
Yeah, I, there's no camera showing you the audience, I suppose.
No, I just wondered if anybody was attending in person.
Are we...
I, yeah, I was trying to get the password.
Oh, okay.
All right. Let's do this right here.
Madam Chair, if I could, um, I think before Scott begins his presentation, you might want to open the public hearing.
I'm going to motion to open the public hearing this evening.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, go ahead, Scott. I got distracted by John.
All right, good evening. Um, I'm here to, uh, present on the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. Two, um, we do this every... There we go. We, here we are. So here's the agenda this evening. It's very quick. I like about five slides for you here. So, um, so tonight, we're gonna, you're gonna receive a, a staff briefing on the proposed amendments. Uh, we have a couple of edits to those. They're minor. Um, I have slides on those edits for you. And then you will continue with your, uh, public hearing. Once you close the hearing, um, you will, um, make a recommendation to city council. Um, this year's amendments, um, include our required, um, annual amendments to the capital facilities plan. Uh, these are required every year to, um, rectify, you know, any kind of inconsistencies with the capital facilities plan and this, uh, and the capital improvements plan, um, and the annual budget. There also were two park acquisitions, um, over the last couple of years that require, uh, zoning map amendments and amendments to the neighborhood plan and land use, um, figures, um, in the comprehensive plan. Um, there is the land, uh, the, the land use element. Uh, there's an urban center, downtown Kirkland Urban Center designation. Um, this has got a slight amendment to it that we've added, um, which I will have a slide on, uh, for consistency. And we just, um, have another amendment to the community character on a, um, new historic, uh, designation on the Barth House in South Rose Hill neighborhood, um, which I'll have a, also an amendment to. There's a table that we have to amend. So, uh, the two, the next two slides are just basically going over the, um, the edits, edits and the addition. So the, the first slide here is, uh, going over the, um, the policy, uh, uh, land use policy, uh, 5.5. And, uh, this is involving the, the urban center designation. Uh, the edit here is to include, um, the complementary neighborhood plan, uh, policy as, um, an example of supporting the, uh, urban center designation. And this is a, a new, a new amendment here to the community character element. This is to identify the Barth House, um, in the, as a historic, receiving historic designation under table CC1, list B. That concludes the, um, the summary in very, in a very quick form of the amendments. Your packet has obviously the, the more detailed, uh, descriptions of the remaining amendments, but prior to, um, making a recommendation, you'll have to, um, oops, you're trying to move this around here. There we go. I'm gonna move John around. Move John around over there. You go over there. So there'll be two motions to, uh, with the, uh, Planning Commission's recommendation. The first motion would be to recommend the comprehensive plan amendments. And this would have to include staff's amended language to policy, um, LU 5.5 and, um, and the community character table C1, uh, CC1, list B, the Barth House designation. The second motion would have to include, um, recommending the zoning map amendments that would include the park acquisitions.
Do we have any questions? Do we have any public comment on this item specifically? No. In which case, does anyone have any comments? Not questions, comments before we make a motion? Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move that, I move to recommend the comp plan amendments, including staff's amended language to policy LU 5.5 and the table CC dash 1, list B for the Barth House, and make that recommendation to council for adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm happy to make the second motion, which is to recommend zoning map amendments to include the city's park acquisitions and make that recommendation to forward to council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Closed and we can move on to Planning Commission policies and procedures.
I knew Scott was gonna do this to me.
I know, right? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make this quick for you all this evening, um, after I learn how to share the screen up here. Sorry, it's a whole new world for us being in person here.
Okay, um, so commissioners, this, these are the amendments to your policies and procedures that we discussed at your October 13th meeting. To remind you briefly, uh, the Planning Commission can amend its policies and procedures at any regular meeting by a majority vote of the members. The two amendments to your policies and procedures, uh, tonight that you discussed at the October, October 13th meeting, excuse me, uh, were first to, um, remove a reference to the Houghton Community Council now that that is sunset. And the second that there was more substantive conversation on at your last meeting was to add, um, expectations around Planning Commissioner attendance at virtual meetings. Uh, the language in your packet and that you see on the screen is the language agreed upon by commission at the previous meeting. Um, and that is noting, uh, the two changes you made to the, the recommendations last time were to add, um, a reference to concerns about public or personal health being a good reason to not perhaps attend a meeting in person and attend virtually instead. And then also we added to this subsection two, uh, that telephone connections could be a valid way for commissioners to, uh, participate in the meeting. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll hand it back over to, to you. And I believe the next step would be to discuss and if you're ready to, uh, vote on your amendments. And I have a hard copy, uh, a clean version of this over here if you do decide to adopt and you can all sign that.
I personally feel like we discussed this in length at the last meeting, so I don't personally have any comments here and I'm ready to approve this.
I'm, I'm happy to authorize somebody to sign for me. I don't have any additional comments.
Any... Then I motion to approve the updated, uh, rules of procedures for the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can pass that around to sign after the meeting.
Okay. Um, and it looks like we have no, um, reading or approval of minutes tonight, so city council actions and calendar update.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Hold on, John's got his hand up.
Well, that was for calendar actions.
Okay, I, I mean, I, okay, we can wait. City council actions?
Thank you. I'm gonna hand it over to Adam here to discuss city council actions.
Okay, I'll make it really fast. I know it's late. Um, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. I guess I'll just mention two things. One, um, on October 18th, the city council talked about legislative priorities for this coming legislative session, which begins in January. It's coming up very soon. Um, so they talked about sort of general principles in terms of defining legislative priorities for this year. So like protecting, you know, sh... for this year, so like protecting, you know, shared state revenue sources, supporting the construction of affordable housing, ensuring that critical city services are, are funded. And I think the one, the, the two things I'll, I'll mention, which the City Council's Legislative Committee will be working on related to housing, are looking at property tax exemptions for accessory dwelling units that are rented to lower income or moderate income households. So like if you have an ADU, you're running it to a moderate or low income household, you get a property tax break. That was a bill that was introduced last year but didn't gain enough traction, so the plan is to bring it back this year. And then new legislation allowing for real estate excise tax increment to be used to construct and preserve affordable housing. So again, just reaffirming the support of the City Council for affordable housing, they want to work specifically on these two bills, and a number of other bills too, which you're welcome to ask me about if you're interested. And then earlier this week, on the 25th, the City Council had a study session on the budget, the, the two-year budget coming up. It's the first $1 billion budget, actually, that the city has ever had. And there's still a couple of steps left to actually, for the City Council to adopt the budget. There'll be a, a public hearing on November 1st, and then finalizing the budget on November 15th. But the key themes this year, I mean, we, you all know the economic headwinds that we're all facing and society is facing in general, so the themes this year are not necessarily adding a lot of new services and new programs, it's really about, they're really about protecting services in key areas, and then addressing the sort of after effects of the pandemic and the great reshuffle. Great reshuffle being, you know, employees in City Hall and elsewhere are leaving to take other jobs, so that we've been faced with staffing shortages, just like other, you know, just like other, other, other businesses, other institutions. And we have, the City Council has shown support for a number of service packages that were provided by the various departments. We had our share of service packages, including, you know, a senior plans examiner, an electrical, or sorry, a senior permit technician, electrical plans examiner, overhiring an additional planner to help with our permit backlogs. Development Services revenues and expenditures are also being taken out of the general fund and put in its own separate fund, so that we can just be a little more responsive to changes in the market as we plan for the budget for Planning and Building Department and other development services in public works, et cetera, in the future. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Again, I know it's getting late. If anybody has any questions about the budget, I'm happy to talk to you now about it, answer questions now or talk to you offline.
Commissioner Tim Chisen, you want to?
Oh, I was just going to comment on the calendar. One, if the calendar is, if we have a date for the public hearing for the stationary plan, I would ask that staff promote that or encourage people to attend and let them know that we're back in City Hall and that they can attend in person or via Zoom. And two, I would suggest we plan some sort of a holiday happy hour, and I'm happy to assist with that or defer to the Chair and Vice Chair.
No, that sounds good. I mean, feel free to propose a, like a day or time maybe after one of our in-person or a different one, so it's not so late.
Well, if there's a, if there's a meeting that we don't anticipate being very long, like a shorter meeting, then, then maybe Allison can tell us if there's a anticipated meeting that's not going to go till past, you know, past nine or something.
It's, it's a good question. And so just to give you a snapshot of what's coming up for you for the remainder of this year, as if, unless you plan on, would like to meet on December 22nd, you have two remaining meetings this year, one in November and one in December. The November 10th meeting is slated to be that third study session on the form-based code, and that's the only item on the agenda at this time. Your December meeting is when we have the public hearing for the stationary plan scheduled. We would be pushing that out and doing outreach to the community to make sure they know that is the public hearing for the stationary plan. And then also, at your December meeting, a briefing on the comprehensive plan update. So two items on that agenda.
Well, if November 10th is anticipated to be shorter, maybe, maybe people want to grab a drink after that, or grab a Coca-Cola, whatever.
All right. Anyone else have any comments on the calendar? I think we've kind of talked about it now at this point. With that, time for comments from the audience, if you would like to speak.
Yes, I would.
Thank you for hanging.
Speak here?
Yep, you have three minutes, if you could state your name for the record, and thanks for.
My name's James Hoff, I live at 12830 Northeast 73rd Street in Kirkland. I've been a resident of Kirkland since 1962, which is probably longer than most of you have been alive. I came here to talk about transitions and the lack of transitions, and I want to pick up with some of what I heard Bria saying and a bit of what Rodney said, that I really think we're missing a heck of an opportunity on some of the residential zoning to provide for some additional upzoning there to allow for a little more concentration of residential living in those areas, as opposed to what I see happening in my neighborhood now, which is to tear apart nice, single-family home lots and put up three atrocities that are happening like crazy all around. I don't drive the city that much right now, but there's at least five of these going on in South Rose Hill alone, and I'm wondering why that's happening. So I'm hoping that in the future that we might have places that would concentrate along commercial corridors, and I think the Northeast 85th stationary plan is one. I know Adam spoke to the fact that we have lots of additional space that we're providing for, for people and all that. I remember back over 20 years ago, when the first look at what was going to happen on Northeast 85th occurred, and my neighborhood association took a stand that no single-family dwelling zoning could change. And I'm the only person, I tried to contrast that, so I came to City Council and spoke against it, because I said it was not futuristic, and it was not looking for appropriate change, and it was strictly a self-serving situation for people that, at that time, I said, we're old. Well, I got them beat, and I don't look at it that way as an old person, I look at it that my legacy is to try and provide for a really good mixed-use opportunity for people of the future. And I would hope that we would do some things that would allow us to retain a few residential areas that still have a decent-sized lot, that provide places for kids, that have greenery, et cetera, along with places where it's going to be more concentrated living and city-like. Fact is, I think the 85th Street plan is pretty exciting. I like what I see, I like what's there, and I really like that main street idea that goes north and south. I think, I think that's good. I wish it would combine with the park and ride on 70th and a nice little electric bus system to use that parking lot and build a big parking lot and have a place where we could zip back and forth and get over into that open area, and we could draw people in not only from our neighborhood, but from elsewhere. So I hope they were being heard, and I hope we don't wait on the zoning.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us tonight. With that, I am going to motion that this meeting is closed. And I am going to use a gavel.
Second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.